Stephanie?
Stephanie Bancroft, Andover.
Vinnie?
Vin Colonna, Hebron.
Sue Rapley, Marlboro, and we'll just go back over one more time. Dave, are you on?
I am on. Sorry, I dropped.
Okay. And Judy, are you on? Okay. All right.
Judy is logged in here. I don't know if she's been able to unmute herself, but I do see her name. There she is.
I'm on. I'm going to mute myself, though, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, before we move to the Pledge of Allegiance, I just wanted to just friendly reminder on ensuring that if you're not speaking, if you could put yourself on mute. To put yourself on mute or unmute, you can hit Ctrl D on your laptop, or if you hover over the picture, a bar will come up at the bottom, and there's a picture of a microphone. That's how you click on and off to place yourself on and off of mute. So those are just two friendly, gentle reminders. So if we wouldn't mind standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so public comments. See that we have about 25 folks on the line. If you can type in your name on the chat, and I will call on you for public comments. And I believe the first one out there is Dieter Zimmer. Dieter? You can, he's on mute, Pat?
He's unmuted, and I can see him moving his mouth, but I cannot hear him. I do not know if his microphone is not working on his computer.
Okay.
Dieter, I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Is it possible that he could type his question or comment, and we could read it for him? I don't know.
Yeah, that's an option, or, you know, you could always call into the conference bridge, too, just via phone instead of dialing into the Google link. If...
That's true. There is also the phone connection for the meeting, which is on the agenda.
Yeah, so I'll type that in while we move on to Kim Kane right now, and I'll type in the number. So if someone wants to dial in. So Kim, would you like to speak?
Yes, I just want to make a comment. I know it was brought up at the last meeting, that one of the possible cuts in the budget was for the parking lot renovation in the middle school. As many of you know, I'm a teacher there. I'm also the REA building rep at the middle school. I'm speaking out strongly against this. We've waited six years since our beloved dawn was hit. Our parking lot is still not safe. There may be signs, but there are still people who drive through where they shouldn't. So I'm strongly urging you that if you're going to make cuts, that that is not the place to do it. I know that you love your staff, and you want to keep us safe and the students. So please reconsider even thinking about that. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could remember just to state your name and the town you live in when you are speaking. Thank you. Carol, or if Dieter, if Dieter, if you could hear us, and please just shout out your name, and we'll turn it over to you. Carol Connolly?
Hi, everyone. It's Carol Connolly. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, so my name is Carol Connolly, and I live in Hebron, Connecticut, Wildflower Drive. I have three quick comments to make. So the first comment I want to make is, I really just wanted to join tonight to give a shout out to the Board of Ed and our superintendent for doing an amazing job with the budget. I really feel like all of you are volunteers. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and yet you are working extremely hard to support our schools and our children. So thank you so much to the superintendent and all the board members. That's my first comment. My second comment is, I really just want to tell you with all of my heart how much I want to thank you for voting against pay-to-play. I know it is super complicated. It's not just an easy decision. But I have to tell you on behalf of myself and hundreds of parents, we are in an economic crisis right now. We cannot afford to pay to let our students join sports. It's really going to be the first thing that households have to look at to consider cutting, right? So we have to pay our bills. We have to eat. We have to make sure we heat our houses. So I just want to say thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for making sure that every student has an opportunity to play sports at Ram. And it's just such a big, important part of all of our lives. So thank you for doing that. And I trust you know how hard it is right now for people to pay their bills. And then my third and last comment, because I know you have a lot to get to, I just wanted to talk for a minute and share with you a story about my son who is in the middle school. So first, my son is in the middle school, and the teachers, the vice principal and the principal have done an amazing job communicating via all electronic devices and Google Classroom. They have done such a great job making sure that he stays connected, that he has wellness, and that he's continuing with his academics. So a big shout out to the middle school administration. I'm sure the high school is doing a great job, too, but right now I only have one in middle school. So I just wanted to add one more thing about his career and his future at Ram. So first, he is in the band at Ram Middle School, and he loves it. And he had an opportunity to be exposed to the high school as well. The band is amazing. He also is an honor student, so he's participating in honors classes, and it's a great experience. He's also an athlete, and I wanted to say that he got into Xavier High School and was seriously considering going, and he also got a scholarship. But we sat down as a family, and we feel like Ram, based on everything all of you have done, is the perfect place for him to continue. But that's the positive part. Here's the negative part, and I'm almost done, I promise. The negative part is that Xavier, they can offer beautiful facilities as an athlete, wonderful uniforms, and a lot of pride. And unfortunately, last year, we experienced a uniform issue that was really disturbing. So on the soccer team, he had used uniforms. This is after I paid pay-to-play, right? So I paid hundreds of dollars, and on his soccer team, he had used uniforms with numbers that came out. So I took masking tape, and I taped the back of his uniform. Then for baseball, this is the last part, because I know you have to go. For baseball, he was so excited. As a seventh grader, he made the eighth grade team. And I'm sure you can all remember when you were in the seventh grade, how important it was to be with your peers, right? So he's an honor student, band, and then he makes the baseball team. He came home with so much pride. The night before his first game, they gave him his uniform. It was a leftover one from a coach, so he had a men's large uniform for a seventh grader. And I could see the stress on his face, because he was so excited to go out there and support Ram, put on that uniform, beat the other teams. They did a great job. But at the same time, we had to pin his uniform, and he was embarrassed. So I just want to say thank you so much. I talked way too long. You folks are amazing. And I hope by sharing my experiences, you can take that back as lesson learned as you go forward and vote on different issues. So thank you again.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other public members. So, Dieter, were you able to get your phone unmuted? No. Okay. All right, so we will move on. So item four is... Yes, if there's anybody on the phone that wants to speak that cannot type, please feel free to introduce yourself at this point. Okay, I'm not hearing anybody else at this time. So we do have public comments at the end of the meeting as well. So moving on to item four, add and delete agenda items. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda, board members? Okay, I'm hearing none. So moving on to the board chair report. At this time, I'd like to ask Pat to provide the board an update on the grading, on the pass and fail grading that we are hearing about.
Thank you. The board of, for the Board of Education and for parents to understand, we will be providing detailed information this Friday. But a couple of weeks ago, the Commissioner of Education provided to districts guidance around grading. And the commissioner's guidance around grading was to look at utilizing pass/fail grades, at least for quarter four, possibly for quarter three, again, depending on the district. But the commissioner left it up to districts to work as a team to come up with what they thought was best for their students. So in Region Eight, we have pulled together a group of middle school and high school teachers and administrators who have been looking at a variety of models and suggestions out there. We have been consulting with other districts as to what they are doing. We have been talking with colleges. We actually have another meeting with UConn tomorrow to talk about what they are looking to do. The Commissioner of Education has also had a committee that has been working with the state colleges in Connecticut and coming to consensus and agreement around how they will understand pass/fail grades that may happen for students, and looking at transcripts, and coming to agreement that they will understand and accept those pass/fail grades, understanding where we are with teaching and learning for all the different districts. Some of the things that we are looking at as we are trying to make these decisions around the specifics around how will we be dealing with the pass/fail grades are looking at the stress that students and families are under, different inequities that we know are happening within their families, and trying best to make sure that we are proceeding with high academic standards and expectations for our students, but knowing that there is a lot of social, emotional issues that are also impacting our students, that we must be cognizant of that, so trying to reduce those stresses for students. The committee that is working on this, like I said, is working very hard. We met on Monday this week for the first time. We're meeting again tomorrow. And we will have detailed information around how this will work for students that will be sent out to students and parents on our Friday update this week.
Does the board have any questions? Oh, I'll go down the list, actually. Let me do that. So, Dave, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Jessica?
No, no questions. Just really glad to hear how many different parties are involved in trying to figure this out, including the colleges and all the different grade levels. So that's really wonderful to hear.
Joe?
I got four phone calls last night about this, which I had no idea what was going on. So I deferred this to the high school principal's office. So, but I thought we should have gotten a heads up on this. Is this our heads up? Or did I miss something before in our emails?
We just started having this conversation on Monday this week. So the committee met for the first time on Monday. So this is the soonest that I'm getting information out. We still don't have a lot of details. So we wanted to make sure that we're not sending out drips and drabs of information, but trying to give a complete picture as best we can. So we're planning on that for this Friday.
So could you answer for me how the students know about this already? And I, as a board member, don't know anything about it?
I believe that we sent an email. The building administration sent an email to teachers who were concerned about the start of quarter four on Monday, helping them to understand that it will be pass/fail. Just keep that in the back of your head. We'll provide more information as the committee works on it this week. I think some teachers probably told students. And we just needed, we're trying the best we can in a situation where we're trying to work with and meet the needs of students, teachers, board members, community members. And so if the rollout didn't happen to the board in a way that it should have with providing you with maybe that information first on Monday, I apologize for that. But we are still working on this as a group and trying to come up with the details to provide everyone the best information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Judy?
Yes, I would like us to get the information, Pat, as soon as it's available, as clearly as it can be communicated on both grading. And my understanding is that AP is being taken at homes and electronically. Any communication that you can give us on AP exams, especially after, as Jessica said, speaking with all of the colleges.
I will make sure to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kathleen?
Pat, I know this came out like just before we on April break, so I know you guys haven't had a whole lot of time to respond. I am interested in what the grading will look like, because my boys are still being given letter grades. So I want to know how that will be translated into pass/fail. And I know there was also some guidelines from the commissioner regarding, you could have like a pass with honors or something like that. So I'd like to hear more about that. I'm also wondering, and I realize we're in unprecedented times, so policies might not even apply, but are there policies that apply to any of this as we move forward?
We will be providing those details of how this will all work. That's why we have another meeting tomorrow in our Friday update, because we don't have all of that worked out yet. So we don't have that. As far as policy goes, this is not a change in policy. This is a change in practice right now, and we are not making district-wide changes in policy, but rather than addressing the circumstances right now, as we are with all the other different types of changes we are making that are not permanent changes right now, but changes in response to the pandemic.
Okay, I'll wait to hear from you.
Rob?
Yeah, like Joe, I fielded a couple of questions, and I think the most popular question I was asked is, do you think there will still be an honor roll for quarter four, or will the pass/fail negate that?
And we are discussing that as well. We don't have an answer about that, but thank you.
That's all, Sue.
Okay, thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I really quickly along the same lines, two questions. What is the requirement or timeline for the... It sounds like you started on Monday. You have kind of a working group, and you're looking at the issue. What is the, is there a mandated timeline for the decision for pass/fail, something else, and having a definition of what all the parameters of that are? That's my first question. And the second one is, is it possible for, at a minimum, there to be some kind of a review for the board so that this doesn't just, you know, roll out in an email update, and it's going directly out before it goes final, so to speak?
There is not a mandated timeline, at least as far as the state goes. Many districts are working at all different timeframes and paces on this process right now. I'm not exactly sure what you mean by a possible review to the Board of Ed, if you mean a specific meeting or discussion about it. We were hoping to be able to get more details out to parents in our Friday update this week, because we do know that students and parents are wanting to understand this better, and we're hoping to have at least most, if not all, of the details worked out by then. So I'm not quite sure how to time a specific review with the board and getting that out to parents on Friday, but I would be open to suggestions.
Yeah, so if there isn't a state mandated time, and we're kind of working on our own timeline, if I knew about this, I would have put this as a new business item to just get a quick temperature for the board of what they think is appropriate. But if we're not driving to a rush to get it out on Friday to parents and students, I don't see why we couldn't do that, but I'll descend there, and we have plenty of time tonight to circle back on that, I guess.
Okay. Stephanie?
To add to the question mark about honor roll, how about class ranking or valedictorian? How are we going to determine that, if it will be determined this year? But just something, just another question to add to the list. Thank you.
Thank you. It's also on our list. Thank you.
Vinnie?
I would just echo with what Pat said, that there's a lot of concern from parents and students. I know, I know, you know, they have to make a decision, but I would like to see some kind of public meeting where the public can ask questions and better understand this, if possible, because I know several people have texted and called. And it's a very important issue for people. So I think they should at least be given the opportunity to get some questions answered. Thank you.
I will discuss that with the group tomorrow.
My comment, off of Vinnie's comment, is we do have a scheduled meeting on Monday. I didn't know if there was a way that we could possibly add something like that, where the public could come in and ask questions. I don't know if that's possible or not. I don't know how that all works, but that could be used as a forum to do that.
I think that's certainly an idea. I would assume or hope or wonder that parents might be turning to the building principals and/or counselors in the building for specific questions related to their children. My expectation is that what we roll out Friday will provide very clear details and information so that parents aren't having those questions. And given the large group of people that we have working on this, I do think we have a pretty comprehensive group coming up with all the different types of things that you've already mentioned tonight as well. So I'm happy to add that to the Monday night agenda, if you would like. But also know that I think a lot of the questions that might come up are going to be very personalized to specific students or families and their issues.
In the communication that goes out, will we be, I heard you, we're going to be very clear about, you know, everything. So there would be limited questions, but will we be pointing the parents back to who they need to contact? So if they do have questions, they could follow up. Will we be very clear on that piece as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. I do have to echo Joe's question or comment, you know, my opinion as well. If our kids knew and they started, you know, letting us know, we really should have been given a heads up. Or, you know, I understand the teachers have to know that this is coming, but maybe it would have been better to, you know, keep it to themselves until, you know, this was opened up to parents and the board members. So I'm hoping if other topics similar to this come up in the future, that we're mindful of what we're telling the students and getting them, you know, in a panic mode, basically, in regards to this pass and fail decision. So that's just my, that's my opinion. Take it for what it's worth. So, um, so how do we want to work this, board members? Do we want to go down and see if we want, if we want to have this added to the agenda Monday? Or if we want to have just the formal communication go out on Friday? So why don't I just ask everyone's opinion, and then we'll just, you know, majority will have it. So David, how would you like to see this handled?
I think David just left the meeting.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure.
I'll go back to him. Jessica?
Yeah, you know, I'm trusting that it's going to be looked at very thoroughly by the people that are put together. And as long as there is a clear path for students and parents to reach out to staff, I'm comfortable with it Friday.
With the communication, okay. Joe?
I'm comfortable with Friday's communication, and then take the next steps after that, but thanks.
Okay, Judy?
I, as, I guess I will say I'm comfortable with Friday if, as planned, you are able to communicate with colleges and get all of the information that you feel is necessary, Dr. Law. And if you are not able to do that, then I prefer that it go to Monday.
Okay.
Kathleen?
I prefer Monday.
Rob?
I'm good with Monday, especially if Pat thinks she would have more information for us by then.
Scott?
I still don't understand the nature of what happens on Friday. And if what comes out on Friday is, here's what we're doing, and it's done, and that's published, then I think it should be delayed to allow further analysis. If what's going out on Monday is an initial start point of the direction that we think we're going or that we're considering going, and parents, board members, everybody has a chance to digest that, then that's fine for that to go out on Friday, but I still feel that the board should... It's such a big deal. It impacts college and so many other things that it shouldn't just go out just as an email without a little bit closer look.
So I'm going to put you down to, you know, have this added to the agenda on Monday. But I think either way, a communication will be going out on Friday. And then on Monday, if you chose Monday, Monday it would be added to the agenda, and we can talk about it in more detail on the Monday meeting.
So that would mean that whatever goes out on Friday is just, I don't know, a precursor? It's not the final?
Nope, it would be the final. Well, it would be with whatever information that Pat came up with. I don't know if it will be finalized Friday, but I'm, my assumption is, I think Pat is trying to finalize things in order to have a very clear communication being sent out on Friday to parents, board members, and all others.
And so what I don't understand is if that goes out on Friday, then there's no reason to meet on Monday, because it's, I mean, we can talk about it, but it's like talking about the newspaper from the week before. It's, it'll be put into place and enacted, I guess.
That's true, but if we had any additional questions, if the community has any questions, Monday would be that forum where they could speak live to someone and ask questions. But, you know, from what Pat said, the communication will have a clear path on who they can contact to receive answers directly as well. Because as Vinnie mentioned, he felt like this needs more of a personal touch and not just a letter.
Sue and Pat, I'm not so sure that parents even know this is coming. And, you know, the communication from the schools has been awesome, but sometimes lengthy. And I don't know that people would be even looking for this without, you know, any heads up or anything.
We will make sure when we send out the information to parents that we notice them that the information around quarter four grading will be, will be included in, is in the information being sent, and that they should refer to it. We also will then have teachers talking with students and going over all of this next week to clarify it with them as well.
Pat, my understanding is that some things are being told to us by, or recommended or mandated essentially by the state. Is it possible to differentiate or to, in the Friday's communication, share some of the communication from our Commissioner of Education so that parents know what is being recommended versus just what is, and then then the Ram interpretation of that?
That's a great idea, Judy. I can certainly add... That's a great idea, Judy. I can certainly add um that clarification from the commissioner as part of that information.
Okay.
All right. So Scott, I still I'm unclear on how to put you down as are you, are you okay with just the written communication? Or would you prefer written communication and a me uh added to the agenda for Monday's meeting?
If those are the choices, you can put me down as Monday. I I just don't understand if if we're going final, so to speak, with a policy and it's going out to everybody Friday. It's good, I guess, to have a conversation clarification session afterwards, but I feel that that's a little bit cart in front of the horse. But if if those are the choices, it's it's Monday. So as an agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie?
Yeah, I think after getting information on Friday and digesting it over the weekend, there's going to be a lot of questions. So I would agree with Monday.
Vinnie?
Uh, yeah, I would agree with uh, I would agree with Monday, uh, but I I would, I would want it to be a public meeting where they there could be, you know, getting questions and answers. You know, the the texts that I got said the 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 son did check with his guidance counselor. And they didn't know yet the impact of the pass fail on the semester year end GPA or the grade calculation. Obviously, this is this is new information that's just coming out and it's still early in the process and some people are going to get a little bit more stressed about it than others. Um, and I just think, you know, having that opportunity to actually hash out you know, if if that's the best approach, I I think would be welcomed on Monday. Thanks.
Okay, David, I see that you're back on. What would you prefer?
Um, I I agree. Monday, I think is a is a good date.
Okay.
We concur.
Okay, so Monday it is. So um, Pat?
I will amend the agenda.
Okay. And then as Vinnie mentioned, will this be able to be a conversation where we could talk back or you can answer back to the community?
That wasn't the intention of of the board meeting and um I really do think that I can have, why don't we put it on as a separate agenda item where I'm trying to figure out how to do that because it really would be best answered by probably the building principals. Who are both on the the committee as well. As well as myself and I, but I'm not quite sure that let me, I I let me look at the best way to create that so that we have an opportunity for a back and forth with parents as well as the um the vote on the budget. So I will, I'll come up with something that we can figure it out.
Mm hmm. Okay, and you know, Vinnie did bring, am I am you? No.
No.
Vinnie did bring up a good point, you know, if we can't work it out for Monday, it could be at a future date as well because I know Monday was supposed to hopefully be a quick meeting where we vote. Um, so.
Well, I guess my question is, do we, and here just a question again for the board. Um I'm sorry that I'm gonna maybe make you go back. But rather than having this as part of a board meeting, should we set up a parent meeting that board members can join so that it is an opportunity for parents to have a conversation with building principals and or maybe department coordinator like our 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 um guidance department coordinators who would be the ones who could help with answering maybe more specific questions around colleges and stuff like that. To me, it makes more sense to not have it as a board meeting, but to have it as a parent meeting with board members joining.
I I'm, I I am for that. Is there any board member that is against what Pat suggested?
So this is Joe. I I'm I'm confused. What I, when I voted to get correspondence on Friday, I'm I'm expecting that there's going to be a rollout of what the plan is and not a policy uh or what is going to be implemented on Friday. Am I misunderstanding you or or Dr. Law? Because the board has to approve whatever this policy is going to be. We are the Board of Education, correct? It's the and the administration needs to tell us what this rollout is going to be, the implications of it. I'm confused at what we're asking for Monday. But I, my understanding when I voted here was to have Dr. Law send us to what Judy, piggyback on what Judy said. Show us what the coming from the state of educate, the Board of Edu, uh, the State of um Education Office. Uh, tell us what the plan is. And then we have a conversation amongst ourselves before anything is initiated or rolled out because I'm at bay. I I have no idea what what this plan is right now, and I I just need some some education on what exactly is going on and 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 what's the direction. So I I would like to, I just clarify for me what what is coming out on Friday and what you want us to do on Monday.
Mm hmm. Sure. And I my my question, and I'm going to have to just be very direct, Pat. Uh, because I'm I'm hearing that from Joe and possibly from Scott, I believe that this I I don't want to call it a policy, I guess, this new, this change has to be approved by the board. Is that a factual statement?
No. It's not. It is, it is, it is within the purview of the district to create a plan to address grading for the end of this school year and does not, it is not a change in board policy. It is, it is a decision to create a different structure for how we are dealing with grading. And the board does not make decisions about the grading. So um, and it is not a permanent decision. It is, it is just a and a a change to get through the pandemic and the commissioner has provided districts the ability to be able to create that utilizing um feedback within, you know, their districts, however, they want to put that together as far as um from teachers and and school counselors and things like that.
Okay, so with with that statement, Joe, did you have any feedback on that statement?
Well, I I guess I'm at a loss of words on that statement because uh, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult, but we should know what's going on as a board. I I feel like it, you know, the administration has a has a right to tell us, you know, or we as a board have a right to know as the Board of Education what this plan is before it ever goes out to the public. That's my thing. Um, I feel like I I'm on a board of education and I have no responsibilities for you know, some of the decisions that the administrations are making when people are blowing up my phone about how this is going to impact their children and um I'm sorry, I I disagree respectfully, but I all I'm asking for is to be informed and I'm not being informed.
I can make sure that I provide the board with the information before we provide it to parents. I am the
Uh, does anybody else have a, I mean, I mean, am I the only one? I'm sorry, but but.
This is, this, this is Judy. I think, um, I I guess what my thoughts are. Um, you know, I'm extremely proud of the RAM districts. My children have received an excellent education. I've been on the board a long time. And I think what is best practice right now, not what you can or cannot do as a technicality, but I believe that best practice is informing us all on the guidance from the state. What is able to be done, what the recommendations are, and then hearing from our involved, passionate, education-oriented community of board members and parents. I just think that that goes with the vision and the mission and the whole um community involvement. We say it's the pride of our community, a community school. And you know, I think that will also make it clear that there are some things that are recommended from the state right now, given this unique time and the pandemic. And I just think it would give clarity. So that that's my suggestion.
I I'm I'm good with Judy's suggestion. I I follow that. So I I'm good. Thank you.
Uh, Scott, did you, I see that you have a comment?
Yeah, it's, I I can't say it a whole lot better than than Judy just did. The understanding what what is okay or what's what's uh, what's possible right here or that the board, there there isn't any requirement to be involvement by the board and or the community. It seems to me that the the right way to roll this out is A, now we all know, so we were just informed tonight. Uh, Dr. Law has a distinguished panel working on digesting what the state has provided and what is within the realm of possible and or recommended. Those experts should distill that, share that with the board and the community. I I think it would be great since there isn't um necessarily a gun to our head the way there is with budget and other things to make a we've been making a lot of snap decisions lately, and if anybody hasn't noticed, but folks really don't don't enjoy that and re and respond well to that. So since there isn't if Pat told me that there's a statutory regulation or something and this has to be put into place on Friday, then then there's really not much else we can do, but that's not where we are. So let her continue with her plan. If it's appropriate to put out an introductory communication to the to the board and the public, and then why can't we have a discussion with with either the public, the public and the board and and then finalize whatever that informed decision is. That that's my thoughts.
Uh, Vinnie?
Yeah, just a, just a quick add on. Um and you know, again, one of the texts I got was that other school districts are continuing with uh letter grades. Uh, I I'm not sure how they're doing that. Again, that's obviously up to the administration. Uh, but this is a, this isn't business as usual. This isn't doing grades for the kids. This is a, obviously a different time. It's an emergency situation. You know, I and and the questions are coming back to us. So um ultimately, we're going to feel them and I just want to be sure that, you know, for the kid that maybe had a bad second quarter and a bad or, you know, was was making a comeback in the third quarter and and was really looking through the fourth quarter to increase their grade, their GPA, you know, that's going to now hurt them. So uh, again, I think those things are are kind of the the questions that are that are coming up. Thanks.
Kathleen?
Um, Pat, I was just wondering, you have the um Dr. Cardona's letter from April 7th that I'm pretty sure you could share with the board. I'm, I think it's on the state website. It's not, it's a private document, but it does it does in there state um that, you know, the document is intended to help superintendent, school officials and boards of education make crucial policy decisions in this time of crisis. Um, I feel like, you know, as a board of education, that is one of our main um topics, and I think we should spend some time on that. Um there is an urgency to send it out, so I think waiting till Monday and giving us the opportunity to look at it is a good idea. We do set policy for grading. We do that for the middle school, for kids going to the high school who are taking honors classes. We have that policy that says, you know, they have to have a a B or better. So I feel like this is one of our roles. And um, I understand what Judy's saying too, and I know Judy has um extensive background in this. So thank you, Judy.
I'm happy to present that to the board on Monday and give minimal guidance to parents on Friday and just letting them know more information will be coming.
Jessica?
Yeah, I was actually, I'm just glad that Pat just said that. I think it's really important um to give the parents the head up on Friday. So having um some information about what's being done, how it's being covered uh to come to some resolutions for all those. I think that's really important.
All right. Does any other board members have comments?
So Sue, can I ask again? Um and and I'm not, I'm not quite sure what you want to do for Monday's meeting. But if you want to have a meeting where parents if we share minimal information only with parents on Friday, then I guess we would share more detailed information with the board on Monday, which becomes a document that's a public document anyhow for the board to comment on, but then how do we share that information with parents? Um, what what role do you see? Because all the questions that you have just asked are great questions. They're the same questions we've been asking as a group. What about GPA? What about grades? What about final grades? What about transcripts? What about this? What about that? What about this type of student? What about that type of student? What about the students' needs, those students' needs? And those conversations have been deep and valuable and um really looked at by, as people have said, the experts that we have in the building, our guidance counselors, our teachers that have these students, our administrators that deal with these students. Some of whom are both parents and teachers or administrators in the district. So I don't know that we'll ever be able to replicate all of those conversations, but certainly be able to answer questions for the board and for the public. But I'm not quite sure, again, do we want to have this as part of a board meeting? Do we want to have the board meeting? And then close the board meeting and open up a a just a public forum about the potential grade policy, grading policy for quarter four. Um I'm not quite sure how you see Monday happening.
Rob, we'll let Rob speak and Rob?
Sorry, it took me a minute to get off mute. Um, I know Monday, we're really basically finishing up the budget. Why don't we do it like this? Why don't we just have Pat make a presentation as to what her thoughts are up at that point? And then maybe set up a parent meeting early May, which would give her more time to gather more information to answer any questions. I just think it might be a little rushed to have the parent meeting on Monday, but that's just my thought.
So you're comfortable with not having detailed information for parents, teachers or students around how grading will actually be happening for the rest of the semester until at least the beginning of May at some point? You're you're okay with that?
If you don't feel you could give us that information accurately on Monday, I would rather wait and have it be given out accurately. You know, giving you a little more time to gather that information.
Okay.
But again, that's just me.
Yep.
Yeah, I I have one comment. I I feel that the parents are going to want some detail. So I I my opinion is, is I'm not quite sure as a parent, I would want to wait to the beginning of May, especially if you have it all mapped out on by Friday. So that's my opinion. Jessica?
Yeah, I was going to say that too. I think there's just so much fear around all that's going on and having this um being so unsettling is is extending it to me might be a little bit um rough. So I guess part of the question goes back to you, Pat. How long do you think it will take for you to gather all the information, to provide it to the board? Um, and then to take that next step to to present it to parents?
So again, this Friday was our, our expectation was the group will have finalized answering the questions about um GPA, about what transcripts would look like, how are we going to calculate for semester classes versus year-long classes versus quarter classes? Um, what are we doing about middle school classes for high school grades? All of those questions we've already started discussing and are in process. So the goal for tomorrow's meeting was to really be able to firm all those up about honor roll, all of those things, and be able to send that out to parents on Friday. So that was, that was the plan of of the committee.
Vinnie?
Yeah, I think I think what Rob was saying, I I agree with the rollout. And I agree with Pat saying that the the teachers and the principals should should discuss with kids. You know, do we give it a week? I mean, next week is May. You know, the Monday is the 27th and Friday is the May 1st. So, you know, even if you do it May 4th, which is a week later. Um, that gives it, that gives it a week to to disseminate and uh and see if people, you know, have any further, you know, and maybe everybody's fine by May 4th and there's there's, you know, there's really not a need for uh any kind of lengthy discussion.
I'm just not sure, Vinnie, if you're I'm not sure what you mean about what was being rolled out at that point. A potential plan? And if we roll out, how confusing is a potential plan? I just wasn't clear about what you were talking about being rolled out, and then, so, could you clarify for me, please?
Well, again, the committee is doing their best effort to obviously look at all the information. And I don't know, I don't know if there's going to be a right answer in this scenario. So, I think that the people that are doing the good work to make it happen in terms of doing it the right way, or as they feel best way to do it. I think what I'm hearing is that people, the board, would like to get notice of it by Friday. And then, you know, on Monday or sometime early next week, you could make the official rollout announcement. And then, that following week, if we do get a lot of feedback, then maybe we schedule that public meeting to answer questions. I hope that makes it.
Yep, so, that's clearer for me. So, share with the board on Friday, and then early next week, so, again, on Friday. So, then Monday, the board could ask me specific questions around what you're understanding, then roll that out next week so that people have that information. And then, we could hold a public meeting with administrators and guidance counselors and stuff like that, if we think that that is warranted or wanted by parents. And we're also going to be doing another parent-student-teacher follow-up survey in the next couple of weeks, just to continue to touch base. So, we can also ask at that time, are there questions that they have that maybe have come forward?
Sounds good to me.
So, Scott, is your, do you still have that question, Scott?
I, I don't know, since everybody's been around the horn five times and we haven't even really scratched why we're here, I'll give you a shot at it. You tell me what's happening now between now and next week, because I think I heard maybe a communication to the, this was Vin's last statement, a communication Friday to the board, some kind of discussion early next week before it goes out. And my question that I wrote in the text really says it all. I started thinking that Friday's communication was final. That's it, that's what we're doing, that's the deal. I've now heard us reference potential and finalized. In the past half hour, as we've kicked this around, so I'm really just still not sure of what the flow is. So, I don't know, I'm having a hard time answering.
So, what I'm understanding, Scott, is that on Friday, I would share with the board what the finalized decision of the group is, but it won't be shared publicly. We would be able to discuss that at Monday's board meeting with any questions that the board has, and then be able to roll that out next week to families. And then, we have the ability, when we roll it out, maybe to have as part of that, that we would have the ability for a public meeting for families to talk with, we'd come up with a date that works for the counselor, you know, department head counselor and the building principals, to be able to answer any questions people might have, if they don't want to do them individually. That's at least what I believe I understand.
That was magical. What Dr. Law just said, Sue, is what I think is where we should be going.
If the majority of the board feels that way, then that's fine. I don't agree. I feel like the board is holding up a communication that parents want. But if the majority of the board wants to move forward with that and not have a communication go out to the parents until next week, so be it.
Sue, this is Joe, why do you feel that way?
Because the parents have heard about this at the beginning of the week. As me, as a parent, I heard about it. You know, I'll get the information, I'm a board member, but I'm thinking of other parents. And now, it's been an entire week where their children are saying this pass and fail. They don't know how to, you know, to answer questions of the kids. They don't know what's going on. And I feel like we will be delaying that communication. It's going to be finalized, Pat said, on Friday. So, you know, on Monday, sure, the board will get it, will be able to ask questions, but Pat just stated it's going to be a finalized plan, finalized on Friday. Why wouldn't we share that with the community and the parents? So, that's just my opinion. I'm, you know, I think we spent way too much time on this topic already when we were supposed to be talking about the budget. So, if the majority feels like we, the board wants to hold up the communication, not send it out until next week, and give the board the opportunity to ask questions on Monday, we'll do it. Rob, go ahead.
I really only stated that to give Pat extra time to get her information. If she thinks she's going to be ready on Friday for all the questions and answers on Monday, I have no problem with that. I just didn't want her to rush any information out and take the chance of giving someone misinformation. That was the only reason I thought to wait a week. If it's finalized Friday 100%, I support sending it out Monday. I was just trying to give her and administration extra time to sort all this out.
I appreciate that, Rob, thank you.
If ready Friday, send it out with the meeting for parent questions later date. Okay, so, I guess I have to go down the list of what everyone wants for the majority. So, I guess the question at hand right now, and let me make sure we're clear with this, it's going to be finalized either way. So, whether we do it, send it out Friday, or talk about it Monday and send it out after the board meeting Monday, it's still finalized. So, the question at hand is, is do we not have the, Pat send out the communication Friday and hold off sending it out so we can talk about it Monday as a board? And then, after the board meeting, we would send out the communication, not that night, obviously, but, you know, on Tuesday? Or, do we have her send it out to the parents and all of us on Friday, and then talk about it on Monday? Hopefully, those are the two scenarios right now at hand. So, I'll go down. David, what would you prefer?
I think David would love the meeting again.
Okay, Jessica?
I just, I know we've been beating this to death right now, but it seems like what I'm hearing, though, some of the concern is that some of the board members wanted to have input after hearing what the plan was before it was sent out to parents. I'm not sure if that's a correct thought or not, I'm just trying to understand that.
Which is why I can say that on Friday, we can find, we can have from the committee the finalized document. If the board has, if the board wants input or has, you know, wants to be able to discuss it before it's sent to parents, we could discuss it on Monday and then send it out. I think that, you know, if but we, if the board is going to have input on Monday and want things changed or significantly changed, it would have to go back to the committee, because the committee would have to be able to try to understand why that is happening. And this committee has been pulled together with the charge of making these decisions based on their knowledge base. And so, I'm not quite sure what, if anything, would come from Monday's conversation that the board would want changed, and then needing to take that back to the committee if that's how we're going to do this process.
This is Judy. Sue, if Scott Leslie is on, can we hear from him? Because a lot of us are concerned about the high schoolers, especially, because of college, of course, and other things. And we know that there are certain things the state is recommending, and I don't know how much flexibility there even is for us to change or have input. Would that be possible, to hear from him and his thoughts?
Scott is on, and, oh, hi, Scott.
Hey, everybody. Um, I was afraid of this. What, is there any, so Judy, what is your question?
Scott, my question is, the state, I've been following the state guidance as you have, and it seems to me that there's a lot that's being recommended that will be implemented. There seems like the majority of it is almost already set by the state. From my understanding, you will be getting new information from the colleges. So, I guess what my question is, is should what, the guidance from the state, as Kathleen referred back to, even the April 7th letter, should that be shared on Friday? And then, a recommended document be given to the board on Monday that goes even further into detail of where there is some flexibility and the reason why? So that it would be, communication would be sent to everybody on Friday? It would not be confusing? It would just be the things that are going forward? And then, anything that Ram might do that is special or in addition? And I don't know what that is, that's why I'm asking you.
Well, I guess, I think I can answer it this way. I think, you know, it sounds like the chief question that people have is what will the impact of going to a pass/fail for fourth quarter be on our students? And that's a, that's a very complicated question. And I say that because in one of our meetings earlier, we were commenting that, you know, I think that you almost have two different audiences here. At the school level, and I'm going to include, you know, I think Pat is hearing this and certainly as principals, we're hearing this, is that we're hearing from students and parents over the last couple of weeks who have been requesting that we consider to go to pass/fail, and primarily to address the degree of stress and challenge that a lot of our students and families have been experiencing. I think that what you guys are hearing from is probably more that those parents who are, you know, genuinely concerned about what is the impact of this going to be on things like GPA and student grades and that sort of thing. You know, when we look at the big picture and talk to colleges and talk to the state and talk to other districts, and a lot of what we're doing is in, I don't want to say in concert with other districts, but certainly informed by what other districts are doing. You know, many, I can say there are some districts that are continuing to grade. It seems like there's a higher percentage that are going to some form of pass/fail. It does seem that most districts are cutting off calculation of GPA at the first semester mark, so back in January. The logic there being that that was the last time that students were in school for all of the time that they earned those grades. Even some schools that are continuing to use grades are not using the second semester this year to be calculated into GPA. So, I don't want to say it's all over the map. My sense is that the continuity that you're going to see in terms of what we're coming up with and what we're seeing other schools come up with is there is a real attempt to cause no harm to a student who has been doing well and will likely continue to do well, while at the same time, finding a lifeline for those students who maybe came into fourth quarter with very poor grades and struggling, and who has been struggling mightily for fourth quarter. I think, Vinny, you mentioned, you know, like, you don't want to take away the opportunity to kind of shine fourth quarter to make up for poor grades, you know, earlier in the year. And certainly, that's a big part of our conversation in terms of how do we satisfy the students who continue to do well and recognize their achievement? And how do we throw a lifeline out to our most vulnerable students who are really struggling through this? I don't know if I confused things, or if that helps give a context in terms of what we're thinking of at the school, at the building level.
So, do you, what is your thought about presenting, sharing information that is clear to parents on Friday, and then sharing information with the board and the public, the community, on Monday, and allowing for some input in conversation? One of the things, and one of the reasons I say that is we have a very, very supportive community for education. And I think part of that is because our parents and our community feels valued and listened to, and as though, you know, they can at least share ideas or discuss things. And I would hate to stop that as, you know, people are struggling financially, and we do want our school well-funded. So, do you have any thoughts on that?
I guess, you know, my take on that is I think if board members want to have any input into the into the final document, then I think it would be okay to share, you know, with the families on Friday, here's, you know, here's what we're presenting to the board. And I would hate to say, here's what we're doing, and then have that conversation on Monday and have it, you know, changed, then they have to go back to parents and say, well, actually, we're going to do this. If there's any way of, you know, I would hope that we could give the parents a clear, here's what we're doing, so they have confidence in it, and you guys have confidence in it. I could see maybe sharing it on Friday with, here's what we'll be discussing with the board on Monday. I mean, that would certainly give parents a chance to chime in with us and you guys and ask questions.
That, I don't know about everybody else, but that was really, you got to the core of what I was trying to ask. I did not want to confuse people and then have something be changed. It just wouldn't feel good or look good. But if there were a communication with parents on Friday of this is going to the board on Monday and inviting thoughtful, constructive, helpful, you know, input, that seems like that could be a good idea. But I certainly defer to Dr. Law and the board on that.
Sue, could I say something?
Sure, and then Stephanie, I see that you want to say something, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stephanie, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, after hearing Scott speak, I'm fine now, I'm good. Go ahead.
Okay, the only thing I was going to say, and thank you, Scott, is I don't think there's an issue or a slight to the committee that is putting it together. I know you guys have considered a lot. I appreciate the work that you guys are doing on the fly in putting this all together and considering and personalizing it for the students of Ram. You know, I don't think that we need to approve anything. I just wish we had had better communication about this. It wasn't even put on our agenda. And I think for some board members and for some of our community, as Judy pointed out, we have a very highly invested educational community. It would have been important to share this information or let people know ahead of time. Like I said, I do appreciate everything you guys are doing. I know there's not a doubt that the group that you've put together isn't putting their best effort into this. I'm hoping that whatever comes out in whatever, you know, format that the administration is open to looking at how it's personalized later on or the long-term effects, because this is unprecedented. Whatever we put out now hasn't been tried. You're putting something out there and just seeing how it goes. But I am okay with how you guys decide to do it. I do think the board needs to have some, at least look see at the document, though, because it is an educational document. Thank you.
So, where are we at right now?
Sue, I'll just interject. I'm going to agree with Kathleen, that's all I was trying to say.
That's what I was trying to say. I think the communication piece is what I was looking for, not trying to get approval for what the committee's doing. I think we should move on with this. Let's roll it out the way, uh, the, the communication comes out on Friday to the parents, the board will now see it and we'll have a discussion on Monday. Let's, uh, that would be my suggestion. And if everybody could just get a consensus on that, let's move on, please.
Uh, I, I agree. So does anyone disagree with what, um, Joe stated? Okay, I, I, I'm hearing nobody is disagreeing. So Pat, are you clear on?
What I believe I just heard is that we will roll this out to the parents and board on Friday and add it to the agenda for the board to discuss on Monday.
And yes. Okay, so we're ready to move on? So 6.1, discussion and possible action regarding the administrative budget for 2020, 2021.
So Pat. I'm just sharing, sorry, I'm just sharing my screen. And. So if it's, if it's okay, I will run through the presentation. Um, there are a variety of people's, um, suggestions in here. And so I think if we can get through the whole thing for everyone to be able to see the different ideas and then, um, turn it over to the board to have a discussion and make motions, I believe is what you're, um, going to be asking the board to do, Sue. So again, this is a budget discussion around, um, the 2021 budget. As you know, we have a vision, mission and goals that are, um, what we need to be using for the basis of the decisions that we make. Currently, as of today, we are at an operating budget of a 1.22. That does not include pay for participation. We are at a proposed capital budget of $448,232. The, um, payments then for the towns would roll, would look like this for the, um, three towns. And it is a, the capital budget is actually a decline of 13%. When you put the capital and the operating budget together, right now, today, we are at a nine, a 0.97% increase. There's also the, um, and the levy offset that will happen for the three towns based on the more than 1% um, that is left in the surplus that, um, has to be provided as an offset to the towns. This slide is in here just as informational because again, there was, there were comments back and forth within public comment around pay for participation. If that's something that the board wants to be able to discuss tonight, this is informational for you. My suggestions, um, based on information from the board about wanting to consider getting to a 0% means that we need to cut the $291,980 that are part of the, that difference between last year's, but this year's budget and next year's budget. The way that, one suggestion that I have is that we have $100,009 in sick and severance. And that, those numbers include, um, after Saminsky's severance as well as teachers from the middle school and high school that we have, um, as part of that sick and severance figure. And that is the amount when you add all of them together for the 2021 school year that, that would, um, cost us, that also includes our non-certified staff. So that $100,009 includes Dr. Saminsky. It includes the teachers and non-certified staff for 2020, 21 and sick and severance. I'm also making a recommendation that we remove three of the leases from the 2021 budget and pay them now. They, those leases are on page 35 in the budget book. And they are for music instrument rentals, the truck, which although is in, it's in the capital budget, but it's still part of the whole budget and the copiers, which are in the operating budget. To then also cut $80,000 from the capital budget. And my suggestion would be to remove the flooring, the ramps. Um, they are a safety concern, uh, with the tripping hazard going down into the cafeteria in the middle at the high school, excuse me. So we would pay them out of money from this current 1920 budget. The carpeting for the two sets of classrooms would be moved to the 2122 budget. Removing the architectural design for the redesign of the front of the middle school and high school, $15,000 and reducing by at least $22,197 the money that we'd be spending on the baseball fields. When we talk about the feedback from Rich Clarko, Rich sent a, an email to our director of facilities in March explaining that he feels as though we could hold off on the more extensive outfield, um, project until we have a further review and a master plan developed. And you can see the information that, um, Mr. Clarko had suggested as part of that process. The whole idea of the curtain drain connecting to the storm drain and, um, measuring the water levels could be done for significantly less than what we have right now for $150,000 in the budget. My suggestion also to reduce future budgets, as I know that there is a concern for the long-term impact of the pandemic on budgets, is that we could pay for the, um, $30,000 for the IT switches that we need to address current issues with connectivity in the building. The 2021, 22 payments for Dr. Saminsky and the truck, all out of this year's budget as well. So those would be things, the, the two payments for Dr. Saminsky and the truck would be things that would come off of the 2122 budget. The 30,000 is what we need to spend now for IT switches. Um, an update on the DOT project. And again, I have had conversations throughout the past two days with Andy Tierney, who is joining us tonight, as well as with Luke's. And we are in no way, as has been talked about, we are, we have not completed negotiations on the inspection costs. However, from a conversation that I had yesterday with Luke's, the, um, Luke's has sent back an email saying, right now, they, they'd be comfortable reducing inspection costs from the 162 to the 142, which is a reduction of $19,000. Again, that's not a, that's not a negotiation that is completed, but just where we are in the process right now. So there, um, the overage now, the overage was $102,000 if you remember, but if you reduce the $19,000 out of the 102, we're down to $83,000 is the overage that needs to be covered. And there's also an expectation for a 10% contingency, which would be approximately $100,000. I did round up because obviously 10% of the $984,500 project is, is not $100,000. Given that, my recommendation would be that for the surplus funds that we have currently, that we pay for the DOT overage of $83,581. Put aside a contingency of $100,000 and use the rest of the money, the $121,377 to further offset the levy for the 2021 for the three towns. Um, I'm sure that, I don't know if, Sue, if you would like me to have Joe explain these slides, because I certainly don't want to. So Joe, um, if you want, you can tell me to flip through these slides. And if you'd like to be able to share what your thoughts are, I don't know, Sue, if that's how you want me to do this or not.
I, I think Joe would be okay with that, correct?
Sure.
So Joe, just tell me when you're, want me to switch slides, but we'll start with your first slide around the revised capital budget. Sorry if these aren't in the order you might've wanted.
Uh, can we go to the first one, just so, probably with the?
This one?
Uh, Ram with, yep, yep, that's great.
Okay.
We're all trying to, uh, you know, get things accomplished in, in a quickly manner here and do our due diligence from all the input we've had from the towns and from other, you know, entities. So, um, bottom line, we were sort of tasked with, uh, I think coming in at zero. On Monday, we listened to, uh, the Board of Finances and Board of Selectmen. I think we came back with, uh, I think we're, Dr. Law, your presentation and, and some of Sue's and some of, uh, you know, mine, I would say it's mine, but it's, it's collective from the, the group input. Um, we came in with, um, last year's budget was $30,151,804, which is up in the top. And we took this year's budget, starting, it was at the, uh, all-in budget, uh, on, uh, I think it was 417 of $30,443,784, which was a delta of 291,980 of an increase. Uh, since then, uh, I, we would like to defer Dr. Saminsky's, uh, one of his compensate, his year's compensation, there's two years left on this deferred compensation with the intent that we're trying to offset next year's budget. That was our goal. Uh, that would be paid out of, uh, the net favorable position of this year's budget, 1920, uh, reducing, uh, one of your, uh, suggestions, Dr. Law, uh, sick and severance of $100,009.
Joe, can I just, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
So just the 109, the $100,009 already includes Saminsky's, so it's being double counted in that column.
Okay, I did not know that.
That's okay. It, it's not a big deal number, but it would need to be adjusted. But again, we're, we're going to adjust things after tonight anyhow, so it, it's fine.
Okay. All right. Uh, well, that's, that might slightly throw my numbers off a little bit, uh, for, uh, actually it'll raise some numbers, but, um, okay. Uh, reduce the lease, the music, which you had in your presentation of 97,055. I came up with that number based on the, uh, music and the copier lease. As you mentioned, the truck lease payment is the next one, reducing that to 14,870. Uh, increase the door monitor to enhance security. We, uh, had talked about this in our facilities committee and safety committee about the current position of the door monitor. And, uh, we would like to enhance that position. So based on the numbers that Dr. Law had given our committee, uh, the subcommittee, and we never had conversations on this as of COVID, uh, you know, coming into play here. We've never had conversations on this, but as a full board, but since we're here, uh, we would like to increase that position, to take it from the current position to, uh, implement a security guard type of either, uh, as, um, at the talk of the, or the conversation at that point was an armed security officer, uh, for after school to patrol the building and have a remote access capability versus the current situation, uh, where we have a gentleman at the door of the high school, uh, just buzzing people in with limited security. So that was the intent for that. That brought us down to a reduction of the budget of a negative 221,506. The new total of the budget was $30,222,278. Uh, we reduced the capital, uh, I can, I'll talk about capital next, but, uh, the reduction in capital was 104,780, which brought it down to $30,117,498, which was a negative decrease of $34,306. The next, uh, item down is the money that was going to be returned to the three towns that is, uh, um, contractual, I believe, uh, based on our state, uh, regulations, what needs to go back to the three towns, uh, that's audited money. And then the surplus from the 1920, uh, it was, uh, 30, 304,959 minus the 232, which we'll talk about next, was a delta of $90,159. Those two numbers going back to the three entities was $197,079. And that brought us down to a new budget of $29,924,19. And now that's after we make our motions to whatever we're going to do. But the new budget number was $30,117, which is a negative $34,000 for, um, this budget. Uh, so we can go to the next slide, Pat, which would be the capital, uh, budget. Uh, similar to everybody's, I think, uh, we all have different, uh, had input onto what was prioritized. And before I go on any further, I just want to let the audience know that how we govern our capital or how we direct, there was a comment the other night that, uh, how do we prioritize things? Five years ago, we, we went out and the, the board unanimously, uh, had two feasibility studies done on our facility, outs externally and internally. And there was two reports that were generated. They are on the website for people's review. If you want to look at them and how we determine, uh, what capital items get prioritized, how they're prioritized and how they're funded. So we use that as our bible to, uh, navigate through, uh, these expenditures, uh, you know, uh, from year to year. So, uh, just a little point of interest there. So we came up with, uh, repair of the EFS, 10,000, replace the rubber stair treads for 15,8. Replace the carpet in room 139 for 15,874. Replace the carpet in 130, 123, 11,219. Sidewalk repair and curbing, uh, this is an annual budget number. We always have 20,000. Uh, IT hardware for remote access capability and security. This is a new item that, uh, again, uh, under the circumstances, the facilities committees have been talking about this, had not gotten to the board, uh, for, for full approval yet, but we feel that, uh, it's essential to get remote access for this, uh, this door greeter so we can have another, uh, level of security in our building. We are going to be also supporting, uh, the bu, capital budget for gates that Dr. Law has recommended, which will access or limit the access to the building for when people are in the building. We feel that, uh, that the next level of security is, is warranted to having remote capabilities. We have it already at our main entrances with the high school and the middle school to buzz people in through cameras. Uh, we think, uh, we know the technology exists. So we'd like to move in that direction in this budget to get this, uh, to get this accomplished. The ground store lawnmower, uh, we've talked about this for many years. It's, uh, we're keeping it in the budget. It's, um, uh, an item that I think people, uh, would support, uh, to help its efficiency, to get people to, uh, do their job quicker. Drum standing of the gyms, uh, keeping that in, 62,000. Those gyms are original. They've never been, um, taken down to the level where they need to be. I believe we were told by our facility director. Upgrade the cameras, uh, year one of three. This is another one of, uh, Dr. Law's, um, uh, recommendations. Gates for middle school and high school, another one of Dr. Law's recommendations, 10,559. Athletic field upgrades, um, we took this down from $150,000 based on some of the conversations that Dr. Law has said, uh, with, uh, Rich Clarko. We believe that we can, um, strategize and with his expertise, um, get things done, reasonably done with this 54,960. I would just comment on the fields. The baseball fields, uh, like all our fields, unfortunately, the drainage is, is a major issue. Last year, just as a comment, there was not one, maybe one, uh, high school, middle, uh, high school varsity and JV game played at Ram. We have a beautiful facility there. Uh, the games were played at West Road, which cost our, uh, district, you know, additional busing to move the players, get them to the field. Also, our maintenance crew had to go down and line the field and prepare the field for games. So, uh, we have a serious problem up there. It's going to have to get addressed. Develop athletic fields and strategic plan. Uh, this is another one of, uh, Dr. Law's plans and we agree with it. It, it's to have a strategy of how we're going to tackle, uh, our facilities. Competition field perimeter drain, um, this is for the main comp field. Uh, we've had a lot of discussion around this item. Another problem when we come into the late fall months after heavy rains. Another problem, when we come into the late fall months after heavy rains, our field is unplayable unfortunately again, and we need to mediate the water, remediate the water and get that off. That gives a total of three forty-three, four fifty-two, which is considerable decrease from the original, which was four, I don't remember the number, four forty-two or something like that. Surplus funds, three hundred and four, nine fifty-nine, we would like to have a DOT construction costs for Luke's engineering, which is now eighty-six thousand, three fifty. My numbers differ slightly from Dr. Laws, but we're at pretty much around the same number that's required, around a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. DOT contingency, ten percent, it's ninety-eight, four fifty, and the IT upgrades, we'd like to take out of that funds for thirty thousand, total of two hundred and fourteen, eight, and that gives the balance back to the three towns of ninety thousand, one fifty-nine. Next slide was the DOT. I can stay there, that's okay, to everyone, Pat, you got there, that's fine. These were some suggestions since we are going to be allowed to pay down the budget through, in that favorable position. That position was reported to us on for last week's meeting, Monday's meeting by our business manager, four forty-nine, nine oh four. Would like to defer the compensation for Dr. Saminsky's second year of sixteen, five, seventy-two, that would officially take him off the books, reducing the debt for future years. Sick and severance, a hundred and nine. Lease and music copier, ninety-seven, oh, five, five, and the truck lease for this year of fourteen, eight, seventy, which would be a decrease of two hundred and twenty-eight, five oh six, and leaving a balance of two twenty-one, three ninety-eight. The last slide is the DOT projects, and I just want to clarify very quickly for the group. I think Mr. Tierney did a really good job on articulating what was going on last week, there was a lot of, I'm sorry, Monday questions from the audiences, the public I should say. The grant was one point three million dollars that we got, how many years ago, two years, three years ago? The project is delayed, been delayed for many reasons. The state has been a big part of that. I feel strongly our engineers as well has let some of the, some time lapse there that has cost us last year's schedule. The intersection for, for three sixteen, which was part of this grant that Mr. Tierney has articulated, we take that money out. Total grant that was awarded to Ram for the project was one million, one seventy-five, seventy-eight. Awarded bid contract, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred. Luke's initial design to design the project was one twenty-nine, five twenty-five. Luke's construction inspection costs using the new number, one forty-two, nine oh three, ten percent contingency, which we, we will need to have, ninety-eight thousand, four fifty. That brings that number to one point three, five, five, three seventy-eight. Therefore, needing to fund the project to get this thing off the books, a hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars, and that's what we will need for inspection costs and contingency. I would also just like to just take this time to share Kim Kane's concerns about this project, just because there was a comment about it, it's just letting people know that this was, this project was supposed to be free to the taxpayers, and I believe I made the comment that at some point, we all know what happened here with Mrs. Mallory, and it is important to the board, I want to share that first and foremost. But this was a, this is an increase to the taxpayers of, of all three towns of almost two hundred thousand dollars. I'll speak as an individual, I have a problem with that, but I have reached out to Senator Osteen and Mr. Tierney and I were working together on this as I'm on the committee. We're gonna, there's some things that we're going to try and do to minimize this, but unfortunately, at this time, we, we have to move forward with the project, I shouldn't say unfortunate, we, we need to move forward with the project. It's the recommendation of Senator Osteen, is recommendation of Mr. Tierney, and several other of the members that I have spoken to in the construction business, it's, this is money we're not going to get back, I think the towns realize that, but, and it's important to our community and our, and our staff to, that we rectify the, the situation. So we, we're going to move forward with this. So I think we've laid out a plan to not only reduce the budget, fund DOT, give money back to the three towns, and also give some reprieve to parents that have continued to pay absorbent amount of money for, to, you know, outside of the school system, you know, for limiting pay to play. And I think that, I hope that we can, we can all move forward with some of these, I think we all have similar agreements, so I don't think this is going to be too hard to, to get this passed in the next thirty minutes or so, but that's it. Any questions?
Sue, are we doing questions now for Joe, or do you want to wait till the end after you're done?
Well, I'm, I, unfortunately, I haven't had time today to review updated documents and update documents, so my documents are from the other day. I, I'm, my, my present, my suggestions are self-explanatory, so I, I don't think I'm going to go into it all. I know we spent a good amount of time talking in the beginning about the pass and fail, so those were my suggestions, you know, some of them are similar to what Joe has, and then some of them in the capital items are just different. And then, you know, last, I made just a few comments at the end regarding the buses, I, I don't agree with removing, moving three buses at this time, I, I feel like we're rushed, and I think a more thoughtful and slower rollout of the buses should occur. I, I've stated this multiple times on pay to participate, it, I feel like it should be a lower rate, not completely eliminated, and then I definitely think that what, what we can do to, you know, pay out of the nineteen twenty budget to offset the twenty twenty-one budget should be considered. So I, I, I won't go into too much detail on my slides at this time. So, yeah, I think that the, the questions should be asked now, I guess, and I could, you know, I know we've been using this chat thing and it's been working great, so if someone wants to speak, if you want to just type your name in the chat, and then I, I could call upon you.
So this is Carol Connolly, I'm trying to type in the chat and it wasn't letting me.
Okay, this is not a public comments yet, public comments will be item number seven when we finish this conversation.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Okay.
Sue, this is, this is Judy, can I speak now, may I speak now?
Sure, absolutely.
I just really want to say, I was telling my, my daughter who is a high school senior just how impressed I am with this community and the board, and that these are all citizen volunteers and the huge amount of work that has gone into this budget by, you know, Joe and certainly many, many others, Scott around security and just everybody, every board member, to really prioritize and recognize student achievement and student success, parents, the community, and our faculty and staff who we love. So I just want to say thank you so very much. We were given the opportunity to ask questions and I just, a huge kudos and, and hats off to this presentation that was just given, I'm just, I'm just really proud of it, so thank you.
Stephanie, I think you're up next.
Yeah, I have a question about the Bob Saminsky's deferment. You said that that was included in the sick and severance. I'm wondering if we can take that sixteen thousand, five seventy-two and put it back to the town since, since we're already at a zero, and that would, that would bump it up to somewhere around almost two hundred. I think that if we're looking for a place to put that, that would be the best place.
So in, I, let me just clarify that, Stephanie, and then maybe Joe can make sure that I'm correct on this. On the sheet that says, I'm going to actually go to it. Hold on one second. On, on this sheet right here, Joe, on this sheet, you're talking about our current budget, and within the one hundred thousand, nine dollars includes Samin, Mr. Dr. Saminsky's sixteen, five seventy-two. On this sheet, my understanding is you're talking about his second year deferment.
That's correct, that's correct.
So on this sheet right here, we would need to add back in to this final number, the, the sixteen, five seventy-two, because this sheet is talking about the twenty twenty-one payment, which is already included, correct?
Yes, but I did not know that, I didn't, I did not, yeah, so.
Right, I'm just making sure.
I didn't see that, well, I don't know for that, what that makes up, I saw the, I saw the, the lease one that had the truck in it, but I didn't, so I backed that out, but yes, if, if that, if his sixteen thousand is in that one hundred and nine, then you would be correct.
Correct, thank you. So Stephanie, going back to your statement, that would, just, I just wanted to clarify, you would want to take that sixteen, five seventy-two, add it back into the revised budget to add, to put more back to the towns. So.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification, that's what I, that's what I originally, I think that's what I said, I think I understand it.
Okay, because I think at some point we'll need to make a motion on things. So Sue, I don't know if you're looking for motions right now or just questions, I think you were just asking for questions.
Yeah, questions, questions or motions, whatever the, the board wants to do at this point. But we, we have an agenda item where it says discussion, and this is, you know, our discussion point and question, so at any point we can make motions to start moving forward.
Sue, can I just ask a question on the capital budget that Joe presented?
Sure.
Joe, on the capital budget for the.
Can you go to that slide?
All right. For the capital budget, item IT hardware for remote access capability, security, twenty-five thousand dollars, can I ask how you came up with that figure?
I was going to let Scott defer, I'll defer to Scott on that.
Yeah, absolutely, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that figure is enough to do, and again, this is just all estimates and some conversations with firms who do this. At a minimum, one entryway, but at least, more than likely multiple entryways, all-inclusive, meaning remotely activated locks, which we already have, cameras to support the locks, and then software that allows the locks to be activated and the camera to be monitored from mobile devices.
So my concern about this is that would require the district to now be using two different systems, because within the district, we have, we have, I believe it's over twenty-four different entrances that need to have, that use the remote access system. So what this would do, it sounds like, is we would have one system that would be working, I guess, just the auditorium door, or the auditorium door at the high school and the main entrance door, or the middle school one as well, and then we'd have to utilize a different system for all the other entryways, and because our current system does not provide the opportunity to utilize a remote system. I'm also wondering if the iPad and equipment to be able to run this is included in that, and I think that in the past, as a matter of fact, I know in the past, we had two different security systems working in the building, and it did not work efficiently or effectively, and was a, a concern for those who had to activate and use them. And so without actually having a bid, and without actually having somebody coming into, I'm assuming, looking at our system and providing that, I have some real concerns about moving that forward and having it be a system that is utilizable for the district since those, the people, the people working in the district are the ones that have to deal with this.
Sure, so I would just say that there, there's a few points. First of all, and I don't know how far down into the weeds that we want to go into, security in general, but I, I think it's, it's, it's fair to say that the current state of, actually, I'm going to start with this. Dr. Law states at any time that we discuss security, how important it is to have the building closed down and locked and secured. We've all heard her say that, that many, many times over the past several years, and I completely agree. The status quo, we'll just leave it at that, but the, the current situation doesn't achieve effective security, is the best way to put it. So there have been many discussions over many months that have never really come to fruition, where we've come up with some round numbers. So the, the shortest way that I can put it is there are, I can't prove a negative, but in the discussions that I've had and explaining the situation that there is in the school right now, I'm, I'm more than confident that to achieve what we have talked about in the facilities and safety subcommittee for going back into last year, a, a mobile capability to achieve that security with the doors with video is there and, and could be achieved, and again, it's, it's impossible for us in this meeting right now to, to have the granularity of a project plan, and frankly, there's, there's probably fifty items in this budget that don't have that level of granularity, I could pick things that are on the screen right now as far as we probably don't have a, have a bid or anything else. So current state isn't working, we worked with it in the constraints of trying to get close to zero and trying to achieve that, but to make the security actually effective at the doors and have that, that capability and allow somebody to move around the building. And this reasonable increase plus the increase that was on the, on the front page, I think it was seven thousand dollars, essentially takes us from, we're spending close to thirty thousand dollars and don't really have a secure, a, a secure perimeter and doors to the school in its current state, and takes us to a state where we actually do.
So again, I agree that we've talked about it, I don't believe we ever came to consensus about moving this forward from facilities to the board. I also have asked for feedback from the high school, who are the ones that are utilizing this the most as far as the security officer or the door monitor goes, and they do feel very confident and comfortable with that person and the process that's happening, and I just want, I shared that feedback with the board in the Friday update. So just wanting to make sure that again, I, we don't, our system has not been looked at, we don't have a quote for this, and that it's not something that the high school administration feels we need to change at this point. So I just want to make sure that I have voiced those concerns, much the same way that we had a number that was put out for the comp field drainage in this year's budget that wasn't actually provided through a quote or anything else, I want to make sure we don't end up in the same place this year with putting in a door entry system that hasn't been thoroughly vetted with a quote, and made sure that it is something that would work with the practices and policies and procedures that we currently have within the. have within the district.
Pat, I think it's, it's safe to say that we want you to have the, the system that needs to be functionality with the same system. It's a, it's a budgetary number. I think we've proven the time and time again, that this, the current situation from the board's perspective is not effective. So we'd like to go in a different direction. I think we've had conversations on that, but I, we, I've heard you and let's, you know, I think it's, it's money that we think is, is gonna be well spent and, you know, it's, you can get a quote if you'd like to get a quote. And, but we did ask in, in facilities to get this moving and have it looked at.
Correct, we did look at it at facilities and we did explain that our current system cannot provide a remote access. I just wanted to make sure that that information is provided. I know that the board will be able to make motions and vote on that, but I just wanted to make sure that, that information was provided from my perspective and the administrative perspective.
Okay, Vinny, you're up next.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the, you know, we, we heard from several parents throughout the year that they were locked out of the school. So I know the administration says it's fine. The administration is there during the day while somebody is constantly monitoring the doors. And the doors can be both, the bells, the buzzers ring into the offices and the doors are able to be open. After hours, the middle school doors are not able to be opened by the person monitoring the doors. Several times with ski club, with wrestling team, and this was again mainly during the winter, which, which made it even more difficult, because you're talking about temperatures that get down into the teens and the twenties at night. I came, I was by the school on numerous occasions where kids were locked outside the middle school. So that, that has to be rectified. I agree with Pat, you know, regarding the, regarding the figure in the budget, but I don't believe the current scenario is working right now for adequate security protection. And, you know, if we can, you know, again, a simple, a simple tie-in to the buzzing system to up to the high school from the middle school, I don't think would be hard to do and I'm not sure why it hasn't been done yet. Thank you.
So Ben, just so you are aware, yes, we can make that simple tie-in. It costs about $1,000 and it just didn't get done because we just recently got a quote. We've not been in session, but it is something that I would want to make sure gets done if we continue with the way that we are handling things.
Okay, so I don't see anybody else asking any questions here. So do we want to start making some motions?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to go with, we're gonna call it the Joe proposal.
Would you make the motion, would you be making the motion with the adjustment for Dr. Seminsky's year one? Because we want to make sure that we do that correctly.
Yep.
Year one severance.
Correct, and I'm fine if it was a double charge, any excess savings would go back to the towns.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so is there any discussion? I don't see anybody's name being typed there.
I have discussion.
Okay. Who is that? Okay, go ahead, Ben.
I just, I just want to say that I think this, this touches on all aspects of, of the comments that we heard from the townspeople and taking into account the current crisis that we're going through. It's a negative budget we're returning. When you factor in the Dr. Seminsky's payment, almost $246,000 to, almost $250,000 to the towns. Capital was cut by $100,000, which took out a lot of stuff that was needed, but we needed to make cuts as well. And it also takes into account some savings for the parents during difficult time after they have been the ones that have put in the last three years to the tune of a lot of money for clubs and organizations. And also, the revenue still remains in budget from the parking fees and also the gate fees. And I would be, I would ask that, or I would suggest that if we wanted to take away the boosters memberships and have people pay the full gate fees at the games in order to offset the not paying the pay-to-play, I would have no problem presenting that to the boosters board. Thank you.
Kathleen? Kathleen?
Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yep, I can hear you now.
Just, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but thank you, Vinny, for clearly stating that. This was, this was really hard and I feel very stressed by putting this all together. I want to thank all of my colleagues on the board for, you know, having input and also for Dr. Law for, for leading this. I, I hope we've done what the community has asked for the most part. And most importantly, I appreciate the fact that we haven't touched classrooms and students, knowing that they're gonna be coming back after this. And we do need to support our staff. We have no idea what this is gonna look like when it's over.
Okay. Does anybody else from the board have comments?
This is Judy, I do.
Okay.
I am very appreciative of the budget put forth that both Scott and Rob put forward. So I, and especially security. I, due to my professional job, I am on many, many high school campuses. And I will tell you that just my observations or anecdotal information, I would like to see Ram's security strengthened. You know, thank God, we have not had an incident, but it really does need to be strengthened. And I applaud the efforts of, and the suggestions that have been made to strengthen security.
Okay, any, any other comments? I see Kathleen being the last one.
Hey, hey Sue, it's Scott. If you don't have, let me see, if you have any more in queue, let me know. I just have a short.
No, go ahead. I don't have any, so you're up.
So this is a lot for everybody, whether it's the folks from the towns that are hopefully still on the phone, we at least have a few, certainly the board members. This has been a whirlwind in a COVID-type environment to, to pull together some degree of coordination. We put the survey out, we listened to the public, we had the meeting earlier this week. But if you boil everything away, there's a couple of high-level facts as you consider whether you're interested in voting that, on this or not. The, the, the budget that was just put forth for a vote here in a minute or two is very similar, almost close to identical, plus or minus, literally a rounding area, error from, from what Dr. Law put forward. We dealt with literally a almost $200,000 emergency surprise from the state of Connecticut and the DOT project. It's, it's integrated the public and it's literally a negative budget at this point. And it's, I, I think it's, the, the board has done the best job that they can do to remain the quality that we have in a really tough environment with, with an open ear and sensitivity. So, and I think several people have already said it, but lots of folks, the board members I'm talking about that are on this call right now, have spent literally eight, 10 hours a day over the past several days and in the past week to get us to this kind of point. So you know who you are and I just want to say thank you for that. So that, that's all I have, Sue. You're on mute, too.
Oh, yes. I, I don't see any other comments. Anybody else have a comment from the Ram board? Okay, so why don't we call it to vote and I'll call out everyone's name?
Sue, just to be clear, what you're voting on right now is a motion to bring this forward on Monday for an official vote, because on Monday, you'll see the actual numbers with the actual amounts that each of the budgets are, you have to vote on them separate, you have an operating and a capital. So right now, you are simply making the motion to adjust the budget to the budget that they've said and bring that back on Monday for a vote, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Do you need me to amend the motion to say that, Pat?
I don't think so. I think that we know that we're not voting on, I mean, I, maybe just to be clear, Rob, it's probably better that you say that you want to go with Joe's plan, including the removal of Dr. Seminsky's extra charge for the first year and bring that and, and use that money to go back to the three towns and bring the final numbers to a board meeting Monday for a vote by the board.
Okay.
This is, wait a minute, wait a minute, this is Judy. You know, I love, admire and respect Joe, but I don't think for our minutes, we should call it Joe's plan.
Thank you, Judy. I appreciate that.
So I, I mean, I don't know, Sue, as board chair, maybe you can think how we can name this or Rob with the, you know, with putting this forward or whether we call it plan, the plan that was presented on this date or whatever, but.
You want me to call alternate J?
Well, it's got, right now, I guess on Monday, but right now, it does say Joe's plan on the slide, so I think we need to stick with that. And if we want to rename it like Plan A or something, we can for Monday, but.
Okay, and that's, that's fine. I, I think he certainly deserves the credit and, you know, the team and everybody who worked with him. It's just, you know, as in historical document, at some point, I think we might want to rename it, but okay.
Why don't you say the plan presented by Joe, not Joe's plan? So because Joe presented it. So the plan presented by Joe, removing Seminsky, Dr. Seminsky's extra charge for year one and putting it back to the three towns to be calculated and brought to the board for a vote on Monday.
Boy, I wish I could copy and paste voice.
Yeah, so just, can't, you can't, he, he just say so moved?
So moved.
Yeah.
I'll amend my motion to that.
Okay, who's seconded it? Scott?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so let's go down. I think David's not on anymore, correct? I don't see David. Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye, and just for clarification, it is still a negative budget.
Judy?
Aye, and, and thank you. With, with, aye, with great, great support, yes.
Kathleen?
Definitely aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Vinny?
Aye.
And I am abstaining. And I guess my reason for abstaining is, is that this vote is something I feel like the community should be voting on, not the board. So that, that's my position this year for passing the budget. So now moving over to public comments.
This is Carol.
This budget, said Jill, though, Andrew, I don't know who stated that. I don't know if they, Andrew wants to make a comment or not.
This is Carol Connolly, if you get to me, I'm sorry, I couldn't type.
No, I'll, I'll jump over to you, because I'm not quite Andrew gentleman that typed something if he wants to speak or not. Well, I'll, I'll turn over to him next.
So I'll be super quick. First, I just want to thank everyone for all your hard work and as Scott said, for having an open ear. But my comment is directed to you, Sue. You have done an amazing job. You are our chair. I really beg you, vote for this. We need your leadership. You say vote for it, parents want to vote for it, we trust you. You've done such a great job. This is amazing. When a budget comes in with everyone together, people rally. We need that now. We're in a pandemic. Parents are scared, teachers are scared, students are scared. Vote yes for this. Let's do it once and do it right. And then my, and again, you are amazing. You put in so many hours. Do it. Vote yes, be done, be a unit, bring us all together. We can't fight anymore because we're in a pandemic. And the last thing I'll say on pay-to-play, forget it. There's hundreds of people on unemployment. There's, are you gonna make them choose between food and paying? That's the only line item in there that affects my budget as it relates to out-of-pocket expenses, not taxes, but out-of-pocket. So I beg you, you do such a great job. Vote yes, go on Monday, unify us and be done with this. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. I know this took a lot of hours. And to our superintendent, you two have done a great job in your leadership. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
This is Andrew Tierney.
Hi, Andy.
Hi, I was the Andrew, I didn't spell out my last name, I apologize for that.
Okay, that was you, okay.
Yeah, so I just want to say from the Town of Hebron, as the town manager, I want to thank Pat Law, Dr. Law, and all the board members for all the hard work and working with the towns, knowing we're in a tough situation and uncharted waters. And we really appreciate the efforts of the whole board, the administration and everybody that worked on this budget. I think you guys did a great job. You've conducted yourself very professionally and there's been some last-minute number changes that everybody seemed to work through and we've got there. So I think you've done a great job and Town of Hebron appreciates that.
Thank you, Andy. Kim Kane?
Thank you, Sue. Thank you to the board. I also should have started with this. Dr. Law, all the administration has done a fantastic job with rolling out the schooling from home. The teachers, I know you mentioned before, like for us, we miss seeing our students. Thank you, Joe, for addressing my concerns or our concerns as middle school staff. So I am reassured that it will go forward. I wear many hats. I'm a resident, I'm a teacher, I'm a parent. Please know that we are looking out for all of your children. I'm hearing what my son is saying. When we are playing lessons, when we're planning for pass fail, I'm hesitant to say this, but I'm part of the committee, we are absolutely looking out for all of your children and we'll do the best for everyone. So thank you.
Thank you, Kim. All right, and anybody else? You can't type in the chat, you're free to just announce your name. All right, I believe I got everyone. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Rob. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, I'll just go down for all those in favor. So Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Vinny?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, motion to adjourn. Thank you all.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you. Good night, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you, good night.
Good night all.
Thanks, Pat. Good night.
Good night.